All right. So last week, we started our study of Nehemiah and his little project that he took on of rebuilding the Jerusalem wall. So we'll kind of review a little bit from last, last time, just to get started. You know, a couple of objectives for this study, you know, I want us to compare and contrast the culture of ancient Persia with, with our 2018 global community. What, what comparisons can we make? What contrasts can we take from it? More importantly, what lessons can we learn from it that, you know, maybe hopefully we will avoid being doomed to repeat? Another objective is what can we learn 2,500 years later from Nehemiah that we can apply to our faith in our lives today? So, you know, that's kind of our number one objective. How do we translate Nehemiah's story into our faith story? So how do we pull some nuggets out of Nehemiah's story that we can apply to our faith and not just learn some cool project management tools that, you know, Nehemiah was using 2,500 years ago to, to build a stone wall? So we spent some time talking a lot about some key concepts and some key players. We talked about what, how can we describe Nehemiah? And we had three key descriptors. He, you know, he was obedient, obedient to God. Because God sent him a message that, you know, Jerusalem's in rubble, it's in ruins. He was, he was very patient because he didn't, he didn't kind of rashly jump into this project. You know, he spent four months praying about it and praying and asking God to, to create a, a situation where he could talk to the king and, and get the king's blessing. And not only get the king's blessing, but kind of get the influence, the king to share his influence so he could go and do this safely. He was prepared, so he didn't just spend the four months, you know, praying about this and, you know, he, he was mentally preparing. He was physically kind of starting to gather resources. So, you know, there, there was, you know, it was prayer with action. And we talked about that he was Jewish born, but he, he was born into exile. He, he had no real connection to Jerusalem, other than his heritage. So he was part of the diaspora that, you know, the Jews that had been dispersed through the Assyrian and Babylonian conquests. The timeframe is, you know, he, he lived in the 400 to 500 B.C. timeframe, 500 to 400 B.C. timeframe, I guess I should say that correctly, because he started this project in 445 B.C. And his job was cupbearer to the king. He, you know, he was the, he was the king's wine and food taster. So he was, he was pretty trusted position with the king. Because, you know, if you did a little digging and research and we talked a little about his king, King Artaxerxes, a little bit, but if you kind of look through that whole family tree, and really we can just see it in the Bible, you know, there were, there was a lot of turnover in royalty and it was because they were getting killed by their brother or their neighbor or their wife or, you know, somebody was out to get them for power. So Artaxerxes came from a pretty, a pretty rough family. Probably, they probably originated from Lower Maynardville, I'm thinking, maybe, maybe Cock County, we don't know, probably that area. But so, you know, he had, he had a trusted position with the king, so he had an opportunity. You know, he had the king's ear, but, you know, if he caught the king on a bad day, the king would have his head or maybe his ears for, you know, for a necklace. So there, there was a lot of, you know, I'm sure there was a lot of stress. Some of those prayers were a little bit stressful at times, I would think. You know, and I think it's important, you know, kind of that connection we can make between then and now is that Nehemiah had never been to Jerusalem. He didn't, he didn't know. His brother had, had come in and told him what they had seen. But Nehemiah had never left the kingdom where he was born. So why did he mourn for its demise? We talked about that some, you know, that, that Jewish heritage that, you know, quite possibly he, he as a young person might have encountered Daniel as an old man. There's speculation there. Nothing to prove it, but there could have been, there could have been some, some contact there. So he was kind of, you know, in that group of Jewish people that were, that were remaining faithful to their, to their practices, to their heritage, to the law. So, you know, I think if we're, if we're trying to translate the story, a question we need to ask ourselves then is, you know, do we mourn for our world or do we just complain about it? And I complain about it a lot, so, but, you know, that, that's an example of, you know, as you look at this, how, how does this relate to me? You know, I've, I've never been to Syria, but, you know, I watched 60 Minutes and was absolutely, you know, enraged with what goes on in, in the civil war in Syria. So what can I do about it? I don't know. Maybe nothing, maybe God will send me over there, I don't know. Hope not. But anyway. So we left off, oh, and we'll, we'll reference on the back. Wayne has done a nice rendition of the wall for us, so we'll reference that from the back. So I just kind of want to shut that off. I asked him to kind of plot in all the names of all the people where they were working then. Walk through it, so to speak. There you go. Well done. Nice. Print that out. Would you, you want to share that through an email? Yeah, Steve didn't. I'm going to have, I'm going to call on it and embarrass Steve tonight. Images. Yeah. Did you get that in the dictionary scrolls? No, I got it from Google. So last time we left off, at the end of chapter two, when Nehemiah kind of nonchalantly strolls into town and starts checking out the state of affairs, you know, in the middle of the night, didn't want anybody to know what's going on. Just so he's got a clear understanding, because again, he'd never stepped foot in Jerusalem before, so all he had was a Google map of what, you know, Google Earth picture of what it looked like. So so he was checking out and I, and, you know, as, as we read on in, in our reading for this week, he probably had good reason to do that so that he didn't want to draw any unnecessary attention from some of the neighboring folk that we'll talk about. So so we dive into chapter three and the, the children of Israel in Jerusalem kind of take off of this project and run with it. They're exuberant and enthusiastic about it and, you know, matter of fact, I think they used the word, they worked with, with great enthusiasm at some point. So Nehemiah had, had divvied out the assignments, people were working on the wall. You know, when you just cursory read through that section, you just kind of, oh, it's, it's almost, you almost, it's almost like in Jesus'. Yes, exactly. That's where I was going with that. It's, it's the begats because you, you start going into all of this. But what jumped out at you when you went back and spent some time in chapter three? What seemed to be unique about these work details that you can glean from?
The people that were doing the work were working on the wall right near where they lived, so they were taking ownership or they're part of the wall.
Yeah, they were working in their own neighborhoods. Absolutely. Yeah, there's someone from Jericho, which was eight miles away, is that right? I deferred Wayne for my, it's closer to 20. Is it? Okay.
Yeah.
What struck me was it seemed that they all had different agendas. Some were self-centered, some more in tune with the downright religious aspect of it. Their heritage.
You know, one thing that kind of jumped out at me is that it was a wide variety of people. And you got the, we talked about priests first and, you know, sort of the priests sheet gate and, you know, why they did that. You know, it's like, and they were next, next to goldsmiths and next to, you know, yeah, just the whole wide range of people. And they all, you know, working well together enthusiastically together.
There's one guy and his two daughters.
Yeah. Which is unusual.
Or he was trying to find them husbands. Exactly. Exactly. So what else? What other, any?
Yeah, it's a little not enough. Probably off the top of which you wouldn't afford, but I think it gives sort of a good picture of what Jerusalem was like then.
Yeah.
I've read any place else before that kind of described, they quoted that description.
Yeah, that's a, that's a great point, Jim. You know, because part of the, and we, we touched on this a little bit, that's what, you know, part of the, the strategy by the Babylonians was, you know, you take out the leadership class, the ruling class, and bring them to, they brought them to Babylon to kind of re-educate them and try to create, you know, build a, a couple of generations of their culture and then, and then send them back to Jerusalem to carry that Babylonian culture, to create a, a settlement. So, you know, that's kind of why the, the Daniels and those people that kind of hung on to their Jewish roots were, were really rebelling against the system. So the people that were left in Jerusalem were, were the, the priests and because they had, the Babylonians had no use for the Jewish religion. And the goldsmiths, the stonemasons, the, you know, the, the laborers. Now, it also mentioned too, that, you know, there were, there were some of the city leaders. So it sounded like they had some of the, almost like the neighborhood precinct captains or whatever. Were, were, so they had, they had a semblance of, of a, of a civic organization, I guess. But we'll, we'll maybe dive back into that just before we get out of chapter five.
One thing I read a lot is that, you know, probably some parts of the wall were not as bad as other parts, but some parts were probably just totally devastated.
That's what it sounds like.
They had, they had to find the materials. It's like, how thick was it? It was like a red somewhere, it was a thick wall.
Pretty thick.
Six feet thick or something. So they had to, they had to find a lot of material somewhere.
Yeah.
They talked about the fact that they pulled all the old stones out, even though they were crumbling and they would put them back into the wall. And I don't know how strong that would be.
But they were excited about it. How do we then? Again, and this is a question I'm just going to keep asking over and over again because, because I want us to, to think about it as, as we, as we go through this. How do we translate this part of the rebuilding process to our faith process? What does it, what does it say to us? What can we take from that? Let me back up just a second. You know, one of the, one of the things that we equated, you know, Jerusalem to that, you know, makes it metaphorical for, for, for our lives and, and people around us is, you know, Jerusalem was in ruins. You know, the, the metaphorical translation of that for us is, you know, we've got people around us and/or we are, you know, in ruins in our life. You know, we, we go through times in our lives where things were in a shambles. So using that kind of as a backdrop, how do we translate this part of the rebuilding process to our, to our faith life or our faith process?
Well, I think on a broader level, you think of the supposed decline of Christianity in the United States. Our part in that is to help rebuild.
I buy that. I like that. Take it one step further. Where do we, where do we do that rebuilding? Kind of based on Nehemiah's example?
In our towns.
In our neighborhood? Or sometimes we may be called to go from Jericho to Jerusalem. Jim, you got a thought?
To do something.
Take action.
Really that was, it was what it comes down to, it's like, you call it when you do something. And, you know, they were doing something in the middle of, kind of like we're reviewing, you know, in secular world, well, they were in the middle of a lot of people that didn't want to be, while we're doing it.
Absolutely.
Probably wasn't the best environment in the world to, you know, feel comfortable about doing it.
My thing too is it didn't matter that they were whatever, pre-moral or priests or servant, they came together as a community of work. And I think that is, to me, what's, what's allowed us was, because I tend to want to but to get out there, I mean, you know, it takes more than one person to do it.
Yeah, it takes a lot of help. You know, because think about it, Jerusalem's been in shambles for quite a while. Probably some people may have, their small group might have gone out and tried to rebuild their wall in their neighborhood, you know, out in Faragut, Faragut six, or the Dung Gate, I think would be the Knoxville equivalent. Got that on tape too. Something, it's 85 to 100 years because it was, they were in 560s, those when, I think when, around 565 was when Jerusalem was first sacked, yeah. Yeah, so. Okay, sure.
I can't remember, I should, but it's, the Ark of the Covenant was destroyed or disappeared or something, right? Because that was sort of, that was where the presence of God was.
Yeah.
I don't think it was there.
I think at this point it had been destroyed. I think the Ark of the Covenant didn't survive because it was not a part of the second temple. Because the Holy of Holies was just the Holy of Holies and it didn't house the ark any longer. I'm pretty sure. That's a good question. So you know, in our rebuilding, takes a lot of help. You know, sometimes we're called to clean up things in our own neighborhood and God really doesn't care about our status in that. You know, when we're called, we're called. So if we, if we got to take a bucket and bring them to the Dung Gate, then that's where we're going.
They're going here early.
Exactly, exactly. So chapter three pretty much just gives us kind of that idea of the work is started, they're, they're exuberant about it and they're making a lot of progress. Because again, it's, everybody is pitched in and it's not just a handful here and a handful there. So then we go to chapter four. And what do Nehemiah and his crew encounter in chapter four? Still, opposition. So we run into a couple of new characters. And then there's actually a third one, we'll talk about later, but here we run into Sanballat or I don't know how to say his name, and Tobias. Anybody do any research on those guys? What do we know about them?
Their governor in that same area. So they were, they basically, it was a, it was a power play type of thing. They, they didn't, with the wall down, they felt like they had control of Jerusalem. Wall goes back up, they don't have control. Greedy.
Yeah. And they were probably trying to play nice with King Artaxerxes and, because they, they were kind of left in place and they were kind of hunky-dory. Their actual titles, there's a Greek word for what they were, and I think the Greek word was Aholio, which is translated into a hole in today's English, because they were not good guys. Here's, here's a little deeper into. Yeah, I, I edited that out.
What version would that be?
We're not going to lie. Yeah. It was, it was Old Testament. Yes.
Quick question, but they were, they were ruling, what, what within Artaxerxes territory.
Correct, correct, correct. So here's what I pulled up. Sanballat, the Hora Knight, was a Samaritan leader and an official of the Akhmedid Empire of Greater Iran who lived in the mid to late fifth century B.C. and was a contemporary of Nehemiah. Tobias was an Ammonite official, possibly a governor of Ammon and maybe also of Jewish descent. A brief history of the ancestries of these men further highlights the animosity between them and Israel. Both the Moabites and the Ammonites were distant relatives of the Jews, having originated from the incestuous relationship between Lot and his daughters back in Genesis 19. God had given them a land inheritance on the eastern side of the Jordan and instructed the Israelites not to bother them, not to harass them. That was in Deuteronomy. Because they were inhospitable toward Israel and hired Balaam to curse God's people, it was written in the law that no Ammonite or Moabite were to be admitted into the assembly of the Lord. The Samaritans were also antagonistic toward the Jews. When the nation of Israel was divided into two kingdoms, the northern kingdom was based in Samaria, the northern kingdom was based in Samaria. Assyria deposed the northern kingdom and repopulated Samaria with pagans from other nations. During Zerobabel's leadership or Zerobabel's leadership of rebuilding the temple, the Samaritans refused participation and then they sought to hinder the work. So we read about that in Ezra. Ezra was working on rebuilding the temple and reinstituting the law. And maybe we'll, we'll look at that. We'll talk about Ezra at the end of this study and maybe we'll, we'll get into Ezra another time. So you know, this is really nothing new in the Old Testament. I mean, the children of Israel faced opposition just about at every turn. Sometimes they brought it on themselves, sometimes it was just part of where they were and what they were doing. So what, why is it important to this story? And this is kind of a stretch and this is, I don't know.
Why is it important to what?
Why is opposition, why is this opposition important to the, to this story, to Nehemiah's rebuilding story? Why, why do we?
It's not easy, you know, they're going to have to have God's help in order to get it done.
Yeah.
It's not like you just fall on the wall or anything like that. It's not going to be an easy task.
Yeah.
You can nothing for us. It's like how you come live in our lives is anytime you're trying to do anything for God, you're going to have opposition from the world. You have to be prepared for that.
Yeah.
And also, how do you respond? How do you react to opposition? Do you give up or?
So you're just, I was like following what your teacher would do.
They were, you know, there's times when, you know, when they were, they're pulling down anyway, you know, they're tired and the work was heavy and then all of a sudden you just kind of start ridiculing them and thing like, and then you can't, can't do it anyway.
Yeah. You know, there's a beatitude that says blessed are they which are persecuted for righteousness' sake, theirs is the kingdom of heaven. And, you know, I think that was exactly, you know, this was a sign that, that they were following God's will, just like Debbie said, anytime you're trying to do something for God, you're going to, you're going to encounter opposition. You're going to encounter, you know, the world's going to push back. As we get to verse six in chapter four. Let me get to the right chapter. Don't ever get, if you may have the desire to get a Google Pixel, if you do, don't, don't believe the commercials. They're horrible.
What is it, a phone?
Yeah, the Google Pixel. Yeah, anyway, somebody else got it?
Verse six?
Yeah, verse six in chapter four.
Yeah. So built we the wall and all the walls joined together unto the half thereof, for the people had a light to work.
Yeah. So we rebuild the wall till all of it reached half its height for the people worked with all of their heart. So we're, they're halfway up. So they're, they're about the halfway point and I don't know what the scale is, but that's covered a lot of ground. It's thick wall.
Do we have many miles around?
I don't. I will defer, Wayne's been there, Steve's been there, I'll let him share.
That might have been one mile all the way around.
Total?
Yeah. It'd be my guess.
But it was thick and it was high, so.
Could be more than, could be two miles or, I don't know, it's a pretty good ways. The, the broad wall that they are talking about, well, it's on the map you got, I think it's like right in this area, right here, which is thicker than the rest of the wall. And part of, part of it is exposed today, you can walk up and look down and see it. It's got a scale in here that says then it goes one mile. And to do that, then that was like about 20 miles or so.
Are you talking about the town or the, or the temple?
Well, whatever it is, they, they kind of got to the halfway point in about 26 days. So they're, they're, they're three and a half weeks into this and they're about halfway finished. And they're about halfway finished. Um, and then we get to. Verse seven. But when Sam Belat, Tobias, the Arabs, the Ammonites and the people of Ashdod heard that the repairs for Jerusalem's wall had gone ahead. And the gaps were being closed, they were very angry. Cause they've probably seen this before, you know, little bands of people coming together to try to build the wall back and, you know. They bullied them a little bit and got them to stop. So that got their attention, that this was starting to, this was starting to be a thing. What else happened? Something else happened too.
They started posting guards.
Yep, they, they had another form of opposition that came, you know, that they had the external opposition, then, then what else happened?
They're starting to get tired.
So they were complaining.
Two and a half miles.
I told you.
Twenty miles.
That must be point one mile.
You're off by an order of magnitude. Larry always thanks me. I told you, you're off by an order of magnitude.
Yeah. They are now. Alright, let's move on from the scale, the. This in the little Mitchell Railroad, it didn't matter what scale it is.
Can I add something intelligent?
Yeah, go ahead, we'll see.
Can I rebuttal with something that's hot?
Yeah.
Probably you will. What this construction reminded me of was the CBs, the CBs, because. They have to be able to defend whatever they build. And these guys had to do the same thing, had supplies in one hand, a weapon in the other hand.
That's a great point.
It's like today's CBs.
That's a great point.
We knew that, we just didn't think we were gonna argue.
So. You know, go ahead, Chris.
Oh, the CBs is the construction battalion of the Navy. They go in like right after the Marines to build buildings, airbases, whatever, bridges, whatever's needed.
Go to that.
Google the movie, Our Fighting CBs or whatever.
Or go to the old episodes.
John Wayne or the.
Of Boba Blacksheen from the seventies and see. The CBs at work with Robert Conrad. Alright, so two things going on, they got external opposition from the Aholios. And they got internal. Not opposition, but, you know, they're starting to grow a little bit, they're, you know, they're starting to complain. It's hot. I hadn't chased clothes in three weeks. It's nuts, so. So then how did Nehemiah, how did he address those situations? So we've already talked about, he posted guards, so he. Helped protect them from the external threat. What, how did he address the internal threat?
Some guards and some were workers, maybe workers, they held their knives or swords or.
Got you, so. Yeah.
We helped the poor and they supported him.
He was constantly encouraging them and reminding them to go forth and go on.
He kept cast, yeah, he kept recasting the vision in, in. In verse 14, it says, after I looked things over, I stood up and said to the nobles. The officials and the rest of the people, don't be afraid of them, remember the Lord who is great and awesome and fight for your families. Your sons and your daughters and your wives and your homes. So, you know.
He posted people, right, in certain places made it go more secure.
Yeah, so he had guards, they, they went to a 24 hour kind of security system.
And if half, if half of them were working then, half were.
Yeah, so they were.
And then they traded off.
And they traded off, yeah.
Yeah. But you know, I think the bigger, the bigger threat was that internal threat. Cause if they quit working, then it was done, the wall was gonna be halfway done, it was gonna be. Kind of one of those little short walls like. You see in Ireland. So this, this, I think this, this idea that. You know, Nehemiah kept. Recasting and reminding them of their why, you know, why are we out here, why are we doing this? I think was huge. Now, it was obviously, their enemies were real.
Well, and then they were worried about their families that were lived outside of where they were.
Yeah.
Nehemiah helped them to bring their families inside the walls and have their serving people guard while they were.
So thinking about our faith life, what, how, how do we translate that? Because we have internal and external. Enemies and opposition. How do we translate that into our faith life? What, what does that look like for us? We've already said, you know, we should expect opposition. If, if we're following God's will. Then we're gonna have opposition.
Have your guard up and carry a big sword.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm guessing the answer is not build a wall.
I'm not talking about building a wall, you're right. What does this look like?
There's always people opposed to us, you know, trying to prevent God's work from being done.
But then who do we call on? But who do we call on here? I mean, God, that's great, but Nehemiah had help. What does our help look like? What's the help look like in your life? You know, we, we, we've got to have that team of, of. Goldsmiths and neighbors and, you know, that can help protect our hearts, cause that's our internal, you know. The comedian Ron White has a great phrase that I love. I'm not going to. He talks about his grandfather and he's, no, I'm not, just hush, everybody just hush. Ron White, nice, nice.
I thought it was gonna be the one where he gets thrown out of.
So, no, he's not, no. Drunk in public. His, uh, his grandfather. Would describe his grandson and say, yeah, that Ron, he's got a lot of quid in him. Which is something I know Coggy grandfather would say. He's got a lot of quid in him. I mean, we all do. Stuff gets hard and, and if we're kind of in the middle of. A faith crisis or a faith issue or, you know. Life's in shambles, what do I do? You, who, who do we call to help guard us, to guard our hearts, to be our encouragers?
That's why small groups around here are important.
Absolutely.
And that's like, I think about like if you withdraw. Then you're not, it's kind of like the taking action thing or stepping out, if you're not at least doing enough to put yourself. You know, and the proximity of those people, they don't even know, you know, those are people we're in. They're not withdrawn and.
Yeah.
The church, Cokesberry, I don't know if you ever walked the wall, halls and read the walls. One of their mission principles is we believe that all people matter to God and therefore matter to us. Persons outside the church are among God's highest court. Some of their other principles and things that Cokesberry has is. Would say, get, get some rocks and put them on the wall.
Yeah, that's a, that's, that's a good point, Larry. You know, so that, that's, I think that's an important takeaway that. You know, we, we gotta have our wall building team in place. Because when, when things are going well and the wall's going up and we're happy, it's all hunky dory, but then, you know. When the dung gate starts creaking, then it's. You know, we got, we gotta start. You know. Again, like I said, working with, with, with your Bible in one hand and a sword the other.
Tell me where the old phrase came from, when the going gets tough, the tough get going.
I'm sure it did. I'm sure Nehemiah said that on the wall, he was probably. Anything else from chapter four that you guys? That jumped out?
I think it's. Kind of. It's a lot of great examples, like you're saying, one of the things I think is just amazing is that they, they did all that. You see a lot of people thinking. Why?
Yeah.
We're, we're, you know. Possibly getting killed just to build a wall, what is that really gonna do? Is it that important? Come on. We need to live our life, we need to make money, we need to. Provide food for our kids and.
Yeah.
Get by and we're wanting to still work, not today on those walls, what is that really gonna do? Really can imagine it's hard to keep everybody that into it. It was amazing what they did, I mean, blacked off people with one arm and. Walks, that's just crazy, so.
That's a pretty good sacrifice for one of them, you know, from their jobs and. You know, and getting shots or whatever they did.
Yeah. Or just the, the act of raising food and, you know, that, just that simple basic need. You know, that's a great point, Janet, because from somebody that's kind of been on the church side a couple of different times. Those are exactly the things we hear when, when we talk to people about. Sacrificing a little bit of time to do. Something in service to somebody, you know, for other people. Wow, you know, God, I'm just busy, I'm just so busy and just got, you know, the kids have got soccer and it's this and that and I just, I can't squeeze it in. So. That's what they say. I'm gonna try. I'm gonna try and, I will try it sometime. Try it on sometime, see how it works. Chapter five, chapter five's pretty important. And I'm just kind of gonna throw it out there, what, what do you think makes chapter five important? Nice.
The first recorded pawn shop.
Yeah, exactly. What's the Vegas guys, the famous pawn shop? What? What else? What, what other observations can we make? What? What else can we glean from chapter five that makes it important?
Well, people have worked so hard that they had got, they didn't have food. They had worked. Like Jen said, they were working night and day. To the point where they didn't have food. That's the reason.
Yeah.
And that's an age too, they had to grow the food or. Or whatever, trade for the food, barter.
So.
Just talking about beyond that, right, and these are like.
Yeah.
People, I mean, they just were mortgaging their property.
Right.
Selling their kids into slavery.
Yeah.
And that, so. In the middle of building the wall, then they're faced with this.
Yeah, and, and.
It's like, you know. To me, it's like two big things he's gotta deal with at one time, so building the wall, that needs to happen. You got some people that are not being treated right, but, you know, no Jews, that's gotta stop.
So, really, I mean, I think this is the first glimpse we really get of what God's intention is for this project. What's the real project? What's the real project God's called Nehemiah to do? Restore community, yeah, absolutely. So he's, he's rebuilding the community. You know, and, and the wall's gonna be the physical manifestation of that.
The things will be together, when you work with people, you know what I mean, that you normally wouldn't have a connection with amounts of people who work with you. You know what I mean? It's like an arranged marriage almost or something, that you love them in the end, even though they're completely different from you, right?
I wish I could say working in the church was different. Yeah. So. So, yeah, he, so this, this rebuilding the wall has brought, you know, the people that are in Jerusalem. Together as a community. You know, and, and now Nehemiah is starting to address. The, the, the infrastructure of what, how communities should treat each other, which is the real, those relationships. What else? What, what else can we glean from, you know. Why do you, why didn't Nehemiah make these economic changes in, in Jerusalem? What was? What were his motivations? And I think that was part of it. I think he, I think he understood that what he was doing was bigger than the wall. Because all in all, it's just another brick in the wall. I was looking for a chance to put that in there.
I just thought about this, but, cause I think the New Testament, you know, it's like sinners and tactical. This kind of gives you a deeper picture of what the tactical.
Yeah.
I mean, it's the description of that, so you kind of understand more what they were. You know, they were ninety centrally and all over center.
There's a special place in sin for them. I mean, obviously it was the right thing to do. For them to, you know, to take care of each other. What else could have motivated?
Motivated them.
Motivated Nehemiah to, to, to. To mandate these, these changes in, in the usury and lending and getting the lenders to forgive. The interest and pay back the, the exorbitant interest. It's a little bit of a trick question, cause you gotta dig a little bit for this, but.
They were all, I mean, probably short memories that, you know. They all came from the same era, it's, they all basically were. This way, you know, the ancestors were treated that way all at once. And now you got. You know, some of them prospered and now they're, you know, taking advantage of the ones that are suffering. And that's just, you know, that's definitely not what God wanted.
Yeah, when you go back, would, you know, what Nehemiah is taking them back to is the Deuteronom. Deuteronomic law that Moses instituted. Which, I mean, they, it was specifically talked about lending money and debt and things like that.
I mean, Moses, that's about the work, that's the charge again, right?
Right.
So many years you weren't forgiven.
Seven years, you're supposed to forgive it. So, you know, I, I, again, that's part of that rebuilding and reclaiming the culture. And the community. What else? Anything else from that?
It says that he was governor for 12 years. And none of he, he and none of his people, and he must have a pretty big group around him, close to him. But he said he paid, he fed 150 Jewish officials at his table. And all the visitors and he paid for one ox, six sheep or goats and a large number of goats. And he didn't take any food, this governor. And he didn't take any food, this governor, he got a certain amount of food, money, the buy foods, they didn't touch any of that, so he.
So he didn't even take a dollar?
And the reason is because of the oppression, right? I mean, he basically didn't want to increase their suffering.
Oh, he, he was trying to do it, and somewhere it says, because I feared God, I did not act that way. So he had a fear relationship, I guess, of what was trying to do, so God wouldn't be mad at us.
So. That leads to the next question of, our next translation question is, what can we take from Nehemiah's leadership and apply it to our lives, either as leaders or just as people? What kind of a leader was he?
He was compassionate.
He was compassionate. Took care of his people. What else?
Also respected enough for them to listen to him and to actually go and take an oath with the lenders, an oath before the priests.
Yeah, you know, that kind of goes back to, you know, God put him in a position to be the Cupbearer of the King, so he would have that that respect. What else?
He was expecting paid back.
Do what?
I just couldn't.
What translation are you reading there?
Got my comic book.
Oh, the very last, the very last verse, the very last. Now you're adding, you're putting words in his mouth.
And blessed before.
But it also says something to the fact that if not, that's fine too, right?
I'm gonna give him slack on that, because I would, I would be praying a little bit more.
Just boil down to one or some percentage here, thank upon me, my God, for good, according to all that I've done for these people.
Yeah, but thank blessed me, you should say, remember me.
Yeah.
That could be something that you come back to, Nehemiah did this, and now they say, what is it? Your good works, good parts, good parts, but that's Billy Grant. And most part of his thing is it's not because of all of our sins and things I've done. It's because of what later, what Jesus did.
Yeah, Nehemiah didn't have Jesus yet, so.
No, I know.
And, and I, I don't want to put words in his mouth in this, but, but let's, let's get through the whole book and come back, let's come back to that and just reevaluate that as we look at the end. What's another characteristic that Larry brought up before he went Fox News? About, that would describe Nehemiah?
It's faithful.
Another word.
He was living by example.
Sacrificial. He was sacrificially living, yeah. It's exactly what I was looking for.
You're really, that's scary, right? That's scary.
Yeah, he was living by example, because he was living sacrificially.
I mean, so he sounds like people tell you, then, and then you would show up, I'm not doing that, like, you're like, you're not doing that. Living by example, yeah.
You know, some people lead, there's some people trying to be by title, you know, he's a governor, so he's a high ranking person, so I don't think that's why they would follow him. I mean, he was, he just jumped in there and basically was one of, one of everybody else.
I think he's very courageous.
Yep.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Because he, he stood up and said, well, you're not better than these other people. They're acting like dogs. That's a pretty hard thing to do.
Yeah, these people were probably pretty entrenched in their businesses and had a fair number of guido's cousins and stuff that were.
And then probably felt like we're just following rules. They're just like paying their debt off.
You're taking advantage of dumb people or.
Which, and this is sort of rhetorical, but it's sort of not. You know, it's obvious, but I want to talk about it. How do we translate that situation today? I think of all, of all the story that we've read so far, this little snippet translates directly into our culture today with this usury, with the, you know, the payday lenders. It's, um, you know, it's, it's, it's a problem because it creates just the same amount of oppression that they were experiencing, you know, twenty-five hundred years ago. Now it gets, you know, it turns into, you know, drugs, sex trade, violence, you know, increased poverty. How do we make those changes that Nehemiah made?
There's even people that are in same as debtors prison. If you owe to a hospital, if you owe cars or whatever you owe and you're not paying that, and the lenders get a hold of that, I mean, the ones that buy the loans and start going after you, they're going to come across and off. They can't send you to jail for not paying your bills, but they can get to the courts. And if you don't show up, some of those court cases that are brought before them, then the judges can say, well, if you don't pay, now you're not doing what the court's telling you to do, then you go to jail.
Yeah.
So there's a lot of pressure that people have and they can't get out from under it.
I think we can show respect to people and to prevent the oppressiveness. Treat the guy at McDonald's the same way you treat the executive of the company.
There's a rule, I think it's Louisville, Kentucky, I could be wrong on the city, but like around here, I mean, they charge a four or five hundred percent interest, in essence, on those loans. But people got together and they passed a local rule that the highest interest you can charge is like twenty-eight percent, which is about what you get on a credit card. And so that, that had an effect on, in that area where they, this message went out of business. And there was a thing before Congress here recently that they wanted to make one change. And if they did that, the people said, no, 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 you can't do that, because we would be out of business. It was some kind of change in the interest in the way. You've got a lot of money, just, like, if she came and wanted to buy three hundred dollars to fix an engine on the car, then I had to make sure that she could pay it within that month, or I couldn't loan it to her. And when they decided, we're not, we're not gonna make that change, because that hurts these people that are making these lives.
And all the cash, cash places.
Yeah, it's, it's something else. You know, so, so. I don't know, maybe.
Ask yourself the question, like, why do people get in that head? And look at, like, the source of the problem, right? Like, and try to tackle it that way. Like, if they're on drugs or something and, you know.
But you know, Larry makes a great point that, you know, it takes a Nehemiah effort, where, where a community has to come together and, and address the big part of the problem. And, and then the, the real hard work is then digging down into that, you know, into the drug problem, the poverty problem, the sex trade. Larry, is the group you're part of, is it called the Nehemiah Project?
It's called Justice Knox, but they're famous using Nehemiah. So their big thing is Nehemiah Action Assembly.
And this Justice Knox was started in Knoxville as, as a response to the, I think it is Louisville where that happened, where the community, a similar type group took on the usury lobby in, in Louisville. So. You know, there, there are things, you know, people taking action, so, you know, maybe that's something we're called to, to to look at, be a part of, or, or not. You know, again, it's, it's all about what, you know, Nehemiah understood what his call from God was and followed it. And it was to rebuild the community by starting to rebuild the wall. So. What, what other, any, any other nuggets or thoughts or observations from chapters three, four, or five that we can talk about?
I think Nehemiah was guilty. I thought that was interesting, when he was telling people, we're doing this, we shouldn't be doing this, my brother's not doing it. You know, I, I loan money and I supply them with food and it's not right, but we're not gonna do that anymore. So he was part of the problem and he recognized it and he just said, I'm not, I'm gonna change, so it's, but the whole community.
That's a good point. It's a good point.
I think too, as Seth points out, you know, how each of us can use our spiritual gifts to come together and contribute each in our own way, just like they did with being a leader, with being a worker, being a night guard, whatever.
Yeah. Absolutely. So, next week, we're gonna dive into chapters six and seven. So. Here's a couple of questions I want us to think about and talk about. How do you respond when your detractors get desperate and play dirty? And then what do you do when the project is completed? So, look at that, you know, and again, try to pay attention to some of the key words and, and maybe key places or key names and, and do a little digging. You know, if, if there's a particular word, and maybe has a Greek reference, you know. Take a look at, because some of those Greek translations are, there are a lot of different options to choose from. So. That's it. Then why don't we close with prayer, then we'll head out. Dear heavenly Father, thank you for this opportunity for us to come together and, and to learn from your servant Nehemiah. Lord, we just, you know, each of us are looking for, for your will in our lives, and I just pray that that you'll continue to reveal to us how you want us to lead in, in, in the, in the, in the church, in the community, in our family, Lord, in, in, in the kingdom. And I just, you know, pray that we will take note from Nehemiah and, and, and learn to be patient and prayerful, but also prepared and ready to take action and, and to learn compassion and sacrifice. Lord, be with, be with us as, as we leave, as we go to, to work and as we travel and as we you know, deal with all the, the busyness of our day to day lives and just, Lord, help us to take time to, to look for you. In Jesus' name we pray. All right, gang.